We are being lied to, our freedoms are being taken forever, and I will not be muzzled like a mad dog. And I will not have my health destroyed because you idiots can't figure, can't read truth.
On the issue of the emergency order requiring face coverings in certain circumstances beyond the county buildings, and I'm also going to add on that agenda an emergency ordinance for consideration that would provide for civil penalties.
And also, I want to clarify for the state, excuse me ma'am, I have to ask you. Do they cover schools?
As drafted, the county buildings did not cover schools.
Is that a lawful order? All right, perfect. Yeah, I'm good. Appreciate it. I'm trying. Yeah. How about you keep quiet, dude? Shut up. Do your job.
Excuse me ma'am, I have to ask you. Do they cover schools? Um, I think that's a clarification.
As drafted, the county buildings did not cover schools.
Right. The school, yeah, the school is, we have no regulation over them. And so this is just strictly county facilities, just like we have no jurisdiction over the sheriff's department buildings, the school board, they are their own boarders. I just wanted to clarify. And the cities, the same as the cities. The cities are, they're going to make their own decisions effectively until we make it a county-wide thing. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be here. Like Commissioner Mitchell, I do have the obligation as well. Okay. Ma'am, I have to stop you only because this is recorded and to have to come to her phone. And we can't do this because this is a recorded thing. So. Yeah, we can talk, but they will not. So, so my other question was, because there are people that are here and we're not going to move forward with this today, is there a way that if they can't be here and they don't, they're not comfortable having it emailed in, they want to be heard, so they still call in? Is there a way to call in on Wednesday? That they could call in if they're at work or wherever they're going to be and then?
Well, I don't think we can.
Or not doing that? Okay.
I think we can take a voicemail and transcribe that. But we can't do the live interactions.
Three minutes, you've all roused me for it. Okay.
Madam Chair, Dan, I just want to clarify your statement as to part of the motion. Is it continuation of this meeting? Is that correct? Because I think that that's where we are. You've made it sound as though we're going to do another posting. I thought this was going to be a continuation.
It is a continuation, but I'm also recommending that we post it as a special meeting just for the public's benefit so we have it on. In other words, normally when we continue, we don't re-advertise. We don't re-advertise. I'm suggesting we continue it, but we also put it on the media that we're holding the meeting on July 1st at 2:00 p.m. So everybody will have the opportunity to know. And we do that today if we can do it. Start it today.
Madam Chair, I just want to clear for the record. My position was not to not have public comment. Absolutely. I wanted public comment.
Yeah, no, I know that.
It's just unfortunate we have a time constraint.
Well, because we often, but it's not a time constraint. With the people that have sent in, we are going to have to decide if we're going to hear all of them and if they're going to be added to the record. And so if it goes to the direction, read it to the record, these have to be read before they even come and speak or whatever we decide.
I assume they're here.
Yes, we need to decide, are we going to just submit these to the record or are we going to read them to the record? So there's a lot of moving parts to this. So, Mr. McIntyre, we're okay, ready to make the motion?
Yes, ma'am. I actually have, I have something that's not even related to COVID. And if I could speak for three minutes, because if it's not related to your agenda, I should be able to speak freely at your meetings. It's not even related to COVID.
Open public comment.
Oh, it's, I'm just asking for three minutes of something that's not related to COVID.
We've given you guys over an hour to speak. You need to hear us speak. That's right.
We helped to work to be able to be here.
I would add on the last thing. Did you just weigh in on this?
Yes, ma'am. That really is up to the board. If we have time constraints, we're not able to sustain.
These are recorded meetings. I don't mind if someone has to leave. Our voices will be recorded. They can watch if they're sick or email. That's right. We need to be heard. We deserve that. We listen to you folks for an hour.
Right. We did the job here, but you won't let us have a voice.
Right.
We, the people, are here to speak.
You work for us.
Yes. And if you don't like it, tough. And we pay your salary. So you should sit there, be quiet, and listen to us while we have three minutes to speak and let me know how we really feel. Because we're sick of the government trying to overstep their bounds.
Okay. We have, I have to have everybody to please be quiet because, I have to have everybody to please be quiet because.
I have to have everybody to please be quiet because.
This is a recorded meeting. You have to state your name for the record.
Okay.
So you can be heard. And we're trying to get legal on this. So you cannot do anything until we have legal representation. We decide the way that we're going to move forward with this. So, so Mr. McIntyre, would you like?
I'm here to speak.
Excuse me, sir, you have to wait your turn. We're still, we are still having conversations with our legal counsel, Mr. McIntyre.
All right, Madam Chair, I think the issue is the board's time constraints. We want public comment before we take action. That's why we're continuing the hearing to July 1st and 2:00, so we can have additional public comment. We're concerned about the notice, the notice, make sure that it's adequate, so.
But on the holiday weekend, we should do it instead. So, okay, so my other question is, if we go, it doesn't matter to me. We're going to have to make a decision. I'm just saying that for those that have to leave because they have prior meetings and stuff that couldn't be changed or gotten out of, if public comment is heard, then we would move on to the regular agenda to continue this meeting if we don't adjourn right now. Is there a quorum? Do you have to have a quorum sitting here to decide?
I will make myself available to listen to the public comment until this time is completed. I understand that other commissioners have to go. I don't know if there's going to be three, but I will say on the record that I will sit here until every person in this room has opportunity to speak.
You have to have.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for standing by your oath, brother.
If that's what the board is willing to do, that's fine. You will not have, you know, all the board members here. That's.
I mean, because that was giving me my recommendation, like for those that can stay, if they move forward with this, is it's okay even if there may not be a quorum? It's okay to continue with public here?
Sure, there should be a quorum. It looks like, I think there's only two commissioners that need to leave early. So, yes, there should be a quorum. And we're not, we're not taking action today.
Ma'am, that's why I was getting ready for clarification, just for public comment. Madam Chair, I'm going to go on record right now. Commissioner Zdowski, you keep inferring that you will sit here for hours. This is the first time that I have ever requested this in 18 years. Now, wait, let me finish. You didn't just say all day, but you are inferring that to the public and that is totally wrong. This is something that I cannot get out of.
I have no, I have no problem with that.
Can I finish?
I'm just trying to get it on the record.
And I don't mind listening to the public, but I do not want like the commissioners. That will cause, this meeting was called 48 hours ago. Not even that, if you want to know the truth. And everybody has changed their schedules according to these, the best with their ability. So for the public, to be informed to them that you will sit here for hours and listen, so would all the rest of us, and we've proven that. So I don't want that oppression given out by anybody.
That's not what I'm trying to do.
Hey, just do your job and sit there and listen to the public. We put you in that, we put you in that chair, ma'am.
No, I have no problem.
Then listen. Instead of talking, listen.
Listen to the recording. It's that simple.
Madam Chair, I think.
I'm sick of, I'm sick of all you guys sitting there.
Everybody who's here can actually review the recording. So you'll have the opportunity to do that. I know that you have never missed a meeting of importance unless it's been absolutely necessary. So I want to make sure that's clear, that that's not my position, that anybody that has to go, has to go. I have no problem with that at all. But I'm willing to make sure that I can sit here and let them speak so that if they have an audience, and then each of you will be able to review the tape afterward. And then we can continue the discussion on Wednesday. With all that already in play, so that'll take out some of the conversation that will have to happen on Wednesday and maybe move the meeting along a little faster on Wednesday. So I'm trying to be useful of the time that we've already gotten in. Have those commissioners who need to leave, do just that. I'm okay with that. And again, this is recorded and it'll be part of the record. And it'll be in place so that anybody who has to go can view it. So I don't hold, no, not at all. I'm sorry, that's how it was taken initially, but that's not at all. I just want to be able to move this along so that Wednesday, this public comment will already be completed.
Okay, so. Perfect logical sense. So Mr. McIntyre, after the general public comment, the regular agenda won't?
We'll be deferring that to Wednesday.
It's going to just move to Wednesday, July 1st. Okay, so now we'll back to the conversation as we try. So I need somebody to make a written address for motions, what they would like to do.
Mr. McIntyre, we need a motion. I think that we can make a motion.
I think we can just move on. It seems like a majority of the board or all the board wants to open for public comment. We'll do that and take everybody that's here that wants to speak. There are three minutes. And then when we get through with that, we'll defer the action until July 1st at 2:00 p.m. Those commissioners that have to leave, that have prior commitments because of the emergency of the emergency scheduling, will leave.
All right, as vice chair, I can go over and manage.
I didn't have to leave. I have something I couldn't get out of here later today. I stripped this stuff around for the morning time, so. I apologize. I will not be more safe than listening to you, but I will review the tape just like I have read my emails, my messages. And again, I think it's important that you're here, but we're just trying to move all these parts with COVID. And I know that there's a lot of anxiety and everything else happening out there. So we're going to go ahead and move forward then, and I'm going to open to public comment. And whenever I have to leave, Mr. McIntyre, I'll pass the gavel to Vice Chair Commissioner Zdowski. So we will, but it's very important for everybody to understand that we cannot engage in conversation from the dials. So when you come public comment, it's strictly your three minutes to state your opinion. You have to be held accountable within the three minutes. At the three minutes, if you're still talking and the buzzer goes off, you have to end your conversation. And it is three minutes, so please adhere to that. So if you'd like to come over here to the podium and state your name to the record, and you can begin, please.
I'm sorry, everybody, for skipping. I got a little long. It's a bit fuzzy, so. Perfect, perfect. I want to say, first off, thank you to Chris for doing your oath. The rest of you sound like a bunch of tyrants. But anyway, my name is Michael. I go by Solo Yacker on YouTube. You can look this up too after you're done. Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. They are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The Constitution, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity, do ordain, establish this Constitution of the United States of America. Title 18, 242, deprivation of rights, you should know this, Dan over there. It makes it a crime for a person under the color of law to willfully deprive a person or a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. Punishments, the punishments are up to a year imprisonment or fine or both. If bodily injury occurs, you can be fined or put in prison up to 10 years. If death is a result, you can be fined, put in prison for any amount of years, or put to death. Warren versus District of Columbia, the police do not owe a specific duty to protect us. If this gentleman over here has no duty to protect us, none of you all on this panel have any protection to do anything for me. I have the ability to do what I want, when I want, how I want. This is our country, not your country. It is not your job to tell me what to do, put on a mask. If you want to give health risk and blah, 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 tell people, hey, this isn't it. Stay at home, wear a mask. That's all you can do. Do you want to start mandating people to wear stuff? Trust me, these guys probably already know who I am because I walk around here with an AR-15. All right? I will audit you day in and day out. I see any of you without a mask on, I will personally call the police on you just so that you get that fine. Because if you guys can't even abide by your own rules, then I'm going to sit here and audit you. Especially you Cathy and especially you Franny. Franny, you're a pirate, a pirate. I don't care. You need to go. And for anybody in here, this is election year. Get all these people except for this guy, Chris. Chris, he seems like he's doing a good job, but the rest of them? Yeah, tell them, tell them, Shiana. That's all we hear is blah, 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 blah. That's all I'm hearing from all these people. Dan, you should be actually telling these people that they can't mandate this. There's four counties that are still under this state of emergency, and St. Lucie County ain't one of them. If you want to see all that stuff, go to Palm Beach, Monroe, Miami-Dade, and Broward. So honor your oath and stop being a bunch of tyrants except for this guy, Chris. Thank you, Chris, for not being a tyrant. Chris, thank you.
Hi, good morning. I, excuse me. Promise you a little less animated than that now. First off, thank you guys for your time. My name's Kyle Green. I own Alge's Prime Seafood and Steak out on Hudson Island. And since we reopened, we've brought back all 160 of our employees. We probably have some of the largest guest counts in the community. We've mandated, or not mandated, but we followed all the CDC guidelines as far as social distancing. We've always followed good health and safety practices as far as, excuse me.
Need some water?
Uh, if possible, yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much. So we've always run a very clean restaurant based on the food code and health department. And one of the things that we first learn in food service is hand washing. In food service, you learn about hazard points. You learn about how to prevent foodborne illnesses. Virus is one of them. Cptitis A is certainly one of the most prevalent ones. And one of the things you learn is proper hand washing and good personal hygiene is the best way to do it. Gloves are single-use. And in the serving table, it says that gloves are no substitute for hand washing. Hearing from these incredibly educated medical professionals today, I don't want to argue that. There's no way to argue that. My restaurant has not been wearing masks. I've had one confirmed case out of my 160 team members about two weeks ago, as I was sitting here today. Excuse me, I used to like this. It could be, especially after the animation earlier. Of my 160, just sitting here today, I got another negative case. I've had another 10 or 12 negative cases come back from people that didn't have symptoms, but they were just curious of, you know, hey, we had one in the building. Like I said, I service about 400 to 500 guests a day because we have a very large footprint with the inside and outside of anyone's into the restaurant. It's a large building. And I know there's restaurants in the community that have a much smaller staff. They have a much smaller guest count. And many of them are voluntarily closing because their case count's getting very high. So I'm not saying, nor arguing, the medical professionals that came before me. I just want to make sure that if we're mandating masks or face coverings, we're educating the community on how to do them, like gloves are single-use. I've seen people, I had a guest yesterday come in, wearing gloves, wearing masks, smoked a pack of cigarettes, went to the bathroom three times, never changed their gloves, never washed their hands. That is incredible cross-contamination.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Henry Duhard, resident of Port Pierce, Florida. Just to speak to a few things just about that I've observed. Appreciate a lot of the comments I've heard come from Mr. Zdowski concerning just staying here and listening to us and letting people voice their opinion, even if there's a time constriction. Also, I desperately believe that, you know, I don't think this is the current political climate. If you've really been out into this community mandating or making anything mandatory, I think it's kind of not the way to go currently right now. I believe maybe within some of the county facilities, especially the staffers who work very closely, that can be something that you guys have the power to do, especially if you provide those particular masks and sanitations. I found that with a lot of things we've been doing lately, such as the rallies that we've been having, the margins we've been having, the events, some even voter registration events we've been having, it's much better to lead by example than to mandate things. I find that more people are more reliant to following those particular rules of wearing a mask. I myself have worn a mask everywhere I go, but I don't think it's because I mandated it. It's just because I'm kind of leading by example. And that goes a long way when, you know, just people really feeling like, accepting something that is what we need to be doing without making them feel like they're taking away their rights. So for me personally, I just hope that you guys listen to the public comments, review the public comments. I appreciate everyone who stayed as well during the public comments. You know, and to continue just, you know, listening to what people have to say and really considering what they're saying before making any decisions. I think people are really tired of them coming to speak to you during a public comment and you just going exactly the opposite of what they say. I understand sometimes you have insight that we don't have, but also sometimes it's really important to really take this public comment section as the most important part of the agenda. Because without it, you know, it's more of a democracy. So public comment is very important. Again, I appreciate you guys for continuing to stay here. I just want to make sure that I speak to, that, you know, I will be here at the next meeting and I hope that we make the right decision as a county to really, you know, represent. But I really feel strongly that we don't have to mandate really much of anything. We lead by example. And maybe use social media and a lot of other tools that I don't necessarily always see us use to really get the message out there. A lot of it is just lack of education about, you know, gloves. That's one thing. People think gloves is the best way, and a lot of times that's even worse. It contaminates things more. So I think just a way that we can use social media, use you guys' different outlets to just mass educate people on the proper way of using it. And you find that people will kind of find their own way and they have more pride and unity when we work together that way. So just leading by example is pretty, pretty effective. And if you're going to ask for masks, you might want to wear them. So I would hope that at the next meeting that you guys wear the mask or at least have them close to the ear, because a lot of times perception, people only see you guys standing. They don't see that there's a mask on your desk. So I think just absurd perception is really what causes a lot of friction sometimes. So again, Henry Duhard, I appreciate his time and just opportunity to say something.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, can you hear me okay with me? Okay. My name is Gina. Good morning.
Ma'am, I need your last name too, please.
Oh, Andy, I see. Sorry.
Can you spell that for the?
Oh, sure.
That you have it, G L S. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm here today to express my support towards mandatory masks in public. I believe everyone, both workers and those visiting a public area, should wear facial coverings. I've seen numerous scientific articles claiming masks are helpful and others claiming the opposite. I personally feel the major point of facial coverings is being missed. Common sense will tell us that a few layers of cotton is not an appropriate filtration device for any air-worn contaminants. What they are appropriate for is preventing the disgusting particles that fling indiscriminately from everyone's mouths from ending up anywhere near surrounding persons. It protects not only you, but everyone around you. It's frustrating to see how incredibly selfish some are during this time. I am appalled and disgusted that some can believe a minor inconvenience of wearing a mask outweighs the risk of infecting someone with this virus. It is absolutely one's own right with how they treat their own body. However, you no longer may claim my body, my choice, when it comes to infecting others by spreading this virus. Ironic that some are choosing to use that phrase now. I will surmise by stating I believe covering our face is an extremely small inconvenience that can greatly enhance our safety. And I will end saying I would wear a mask indefinitely if necessary to protect myself and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
So, Joe, my name is Craig Patzanti. My main concern is, I work at the Walmart distribution center practically right down the road. We service 110 different stores, maybe 111, six or seven of them are around this county. Our company's been mandating masks since, I believe, March 17th. So we go through thermal scans, body temperature. If we trigger that, then we get our temperature checked, we have our masks, we practice social distancing there. Without breaking any kind of HIPAA, they are very transparent with us if any associates have coronavirus or tested positive. And we are up to somewhere between eight and 11 cases of employees at that distribution center. Now, they haven't contracted it at the distribution center, but they're contracting it somewhere. Unlike, you know, the WWE or whatever that was considered an essential job, we are. You know, if we shut down, 110 stores don't get freight. They don't get food or, you know, whatever else you may need. So wearing a mask out public, you know, I go shopping at Walmart store, half of them don't wear masks. Not only is the mask not for you, it's for everybody else. And everybody wearing it helps, you know, curb that problem, even if it's only a 20 or 30% help. You know, you want that extra help. It's risking the employees that have to go back to this distribution center to provide for the counter. I'm sure there are other stores, but obviously they're going through the same thing. Once our distribution center shuts down, six stores will get no freight. As soon as coronavirus is said to be in that warehouse, our warehouse has to shut down. We shut down, we have a procedure that if it tests positive in the warehouse, we shut down for two weeks. Now, we ship freight every single night to all the stores. I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer. If you go to the store, I mean, we had that toilet paper crisis earlier. Yeah, I'm sure everybody, yeah, we have it now. But yeah, I'm sure everybody has been part of, even like during hurricane season when there's no food on the shelves. Now imagine that for two weeks just because our actual distribution center isn't working. I heavily support mandated masks. The second-to-last representative, I completely understand that, you know, mandating things in this time is, you know, I get that. And leading by example is huge. Obviously, you guys are six feet apart practicing social distancing. Because some people are inconsiderate of others or also may not be educated enough, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a serious health problem. I cannot wear a mask. A mask will?
Sir, I need you to state your name.
Okay, Richard Olazol. And these tests have been made, masks will diminish your oxygen level that you bring into your body by 3%. That goes from 20% to 17%. And if you want to be sick, you want to lower your oxygen level. And if you want to be sick, you want to be scared, you want to be terrified. And that test, that PCR test they're using for this virus was created by a man called Kerry Mullis. And Kerry Mullis emphatically stated, these tests cannot be used to detect free infectious viruses. Maybe that's why everybody's testing positive and nobody's getting sick. It's a bogus test. And we shut down the world on the basis of this bogus test and we're going to muzzle me like a mad dog? Then you people ought to be ashamed of yourselves to believe all these lies. And look at the, look at the death rate in the United States over this last flu season. It's less than it was last, this flu season. It's less than it was last flu season. And look all over Europe the same way. The death rate is actually a mild one for a flu season. That's what we need to look at. How many people are dying? And how many people are dying of this? Not of heart attacks and cancer and strokes and everything else? And then we chalk it up to COVID. That is sick. We are being lied to, our freedoms are being taken forever, and I will not be muzzled like a mad dog. And I will not have my health destroyed because you idiots can't figure, can't read truth. You go along with the lies that the people of our kind have taken down our freedoms and destroy our country. This is sick. You ought to be ashamed of yourself for being a part of this. And I will not be muzzled. It's time for us to stand up for our freedoms. If we stand back and let these pieces of crap handle our freedoms, we will have nothing left. In fact, we'll end up being dead.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm good, boys. It's a truckload. Definitely, you know, my family, for a lot of different reasons. I actually have a few number of my family in a healthcare, and I speak to them regularly. I ask for their advice. And they are actually saying for the studies that they have done as well, the masks lower the oxygen rate. A lot of people are not, as some of the other people mentioned, they're not wearing them properly. So like they're only used for one time. And then what happens is you got contamination from that. So that's, that's a lot as well. I would also like to mention that the masks also, because you're not exposing yourself. Like, you know, like when we were younger, we were all exposed to chicken pox to parents. Always exposed to chicken pox, so we'd be immune to it. It's the same thing for me as a parent. If I'm taking my kids out, worship my parents, trying to do the other same precautions, it's creating a mask. Because the mask actually lowers your immune system. There was a study by a guy, I think it was OSHA guy, I just watched a video just recently on Facebook. Where he did a little test tube of the oxygen levels in a mask and how it's actually illegal how far down the oxygen levels go when you're wearing a mask. I think it was about 17. We're supposed to be over 19 or 20. So it's crazy how, and that's how you kind of, if somebody was to wear a mask, it would all exercise, you know, whatever. So in fact, you know, trying to hang the mask on. else. So in fact, you know, trying to mandate the mask on employers, I think that should be based on what employers, it's the power to the people. The people should have their right, employers should have their right to decide what works best for them in their environment. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Paul Carroll. And I've been around the floor since 75. I'm a wage warrant inspector, been doing it for 34 years checking out seven things in nearly 20 counties. I've been raised on the farm. I spent many years in Haiti as well. I like to think I'm pretty well inoculated from a lot of viruses. I'm not one of those that gets sick a lot. But try to put a mask on you and try to work, it isn't going to work. And to sit here and mandate that employers require their employees to wear masks. And I was just off to a waitress the other day in an local restaurant. She goes, I can't breathe with this thing. She goes, I know since I've been wearing the mask, she says, I'm more fatigued. She's tired of it. That is due to the fact of lack of oxygen. You've got to have oxygen, sufficient oxygen. Our bodies were created in a way to develop immunity systems to fight off things. And if we live in a stereotype world where we wear a mask, we're not building immunity. And, you know, I heard earlier that this wasn't political. It's funny how it came right in the middle of an election year when we've had countless viruses down to 244 years of this country. And we have never shut down the economy. We have never mandated people to wear a mask. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I'm not against anyone to wear it. If you feel that you're sick or you don't want to contaminate somebody else, wear a mask. But don't ask me to wear a mask because I, like I put up posters in Facebook, those that are pushing other people to wear a mask, I'm going to perceive you wearing a mask as like a baby with a blanket or your pacifier or your teddy bear. If that's what makes you comfortable, then by all means do it. Don't push your ideology over onto me as an employer, over onto employees, over onto the citizens. Let the people use their own intelligence. And what I'm concerned about, you talk about the recent spike in the coronavirus. Have you noticed prior to that, people weren't wearing masks yet first? Then here comes the coronavirus, start wearing masks. Now all of a sudden we get a spike. What happens? You're getting, people getting reddish around the mouth. People are getting upper respiratory problems due to the fact that they can't get enough oxygen into their lungs, causing them to have other symptoms. Off to the hospital they go, diagnose this coronavirus and up our numbers. To me, in my opinion, it's all agenda-driven. And I'm just, I'm not going to wear a mask. I just can't. I work outdoors. I'm a farm boy. I need it. That I'm done.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jane Schaefer, of St. Lucie. You know, to the gentleman's point before, I definitely want to bring up initially that actually the test that is under the CDC, the COVID-19 test that is, actually picks up four other strains of coronavirus, one that includes the common cold. So whether you've had it in the past, present or asymptomatic. But that being said, perhaps cloth masks are giving people sicker. So basically, people may have the common cold and coming a positive for COVID-19 is a possibility. So, like I said, good morning. In April, when the CDC reversed course and the end, it became the recommendation based on the recent studies regarding asymptomatic carriers. And several elected officials took this mandate rather than a recommendation. It is clear, it does not protect the wearer, but it protects others. This collective thought process makes not one ounce of sense whatsoever. If cloth masks worked, healthcare workers would be wearing them, but they're not. These for-profit hospitals led by CEOs like Rob Lord are in the business of treating sick people. They do not make money without sick patients. They are in the business of being sick. If cloth masks worked, we would not be seeing an increase in cases. Looking at the numbers of St. Lucie County, while we did have a slight uptick, it does not in any way necessitate the draconian measures like mask wearing. Broward and Miami-Dade has had mask orders in place since April if their cases continue to increase. Why? Because cloth masks just don't work. People are using masks more as fashion accessory than anything else, as we can see in some of you in this room. As recently as March, we were reteaching folks basic hand washing skills to adults. But yet we expect them to now to know, actually know how to properly wear, use and sanitize the cloth mask. We now have the same expectation from children and young kids too. Is the two-year-old infected to sneeze and cough into the mask? Do they keep wearing it out or continue to breathe in the germs that their body rejected? Same for any age. But for kids, what is your expectation of how to keep these sanitary? If you were in a situation where you have a condition that makes you susceptible, then you need to stay home.
Yes.
This is also another recommendation from the CDC that people over the age of 65 and those with underlying health issues should stay home. Why isn't this recommendation enforced but masks should be? If this commission wants to mandate masks for businesses, businesses should be providing surgical masks then to their patrons and employees. These are the only effective masks to slow the spread. So if we don't burden the businesses with its additional costs, the commission should allocate funds received from the CARES Act to absorb the cost of fulfilling this requirement. A cloth mask is simply useless. And if the county mandates this, then I would hope we launch education efforts regarding proper effective use of masks. But you all probably will not do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sheriff commissioners. My name is James Blasby and I'm a concerned citizen and a voter here in St. Lucie County. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for having public comment. Myself, I had to take half of a day, probably not a full day PTO just to be here. It's that important to me. My only request is that if we do have a face covering order, please let it come from our elected officials and not from county administration. This is something that should be occurring in sunshine and with public discussion being taken into account.
Amen.
Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lorna Allen. And I just, first of all, want to go in reference saying that I do not agree with this mask, mandatory mask. If someone wants to wear a mask, I think that should be their decision. If you're sick, go ahead, by all means, wear your mask. If you think, if you're, and if you're sick too, stay home, be quarantined. But if you're healthy, why should you be quarantined? I don't agree with this. And I just want to clear that this is just a violation of our rights and I'm not giving up any more of my rights. And as long as I can remember, we're still a free country and I go with my freedom all the time. And also, on another note, if we could demonstrate and so-called demonstrate, you know, paralyze, whatever, and be not wearing a mask and nobody's saying anything, okay, why should we, we're just trying to go about our lives and we can make decisions for ourselves, be mandated to wear a mask? I will not. And thank you all. And I'll be voting.
Thank you.
Good morning. Can y'all hear me? Okay. Good morning. I'm Lonzo Watkins. I'm here in Fort Pierce. I'm coming to you guys to try to find out what effect they will have on Fort Pierce, where we do have a lot of our poor and underdeveloped side of all of St. Lucie County. You are mandating masks for, for, let me get this on. You're mandating the mask for Fort, for the county, but a lot of our people in Fort Pierce cannot, do not have the money to buy masks. And we're suffering in a recession, a lot of people in Fort Pierce, as unemployment also. So, three masks, these kind of masks cost $10. A lot of them cannot actually buy these masks to fit the mandate that the county will put on there. So, can you think about how we can get everybody masks first if you want to mandate this into low and poor communities? That's all I'd like to say. Can you please look into that because before we have another incident of injustice or police coming up to harass and we don't want to have another situation to bring that bad luck on this county and our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Bo Slay, management swine barbecue. Just a quick comment. It's the mandatory part of this that is the issue, right?
Amen.
And I don't think any of us are saying that people shouldn't wear masks if they feel the need to, right? If it makes you feel safer, then more proper to you.
Amen.
Well, when America was, when America was shut down, we were asked to flatten the curve to avoid a breakdown of our healthcare system. We did that. No place in this country ran out of beds or ventilators. They were makeshift hospitals set up all over the country and never used. America did its part in flattening the curve. Is there an increase in cases? Yes. We have also done over 25 million tests. That's 20 million plus more tests than the next country behind us. Most of these new cases are people 18 to 40 and most are asymptomatic with very little chance of death. Also, as the confirmed cases go up, the mortality rate keeps falling. Imagine that. The mortality rate is almost down to flu type numbers, which is where we knew it was all along. The CDC just came out and said probably 10 times more people have likely had COVID than have been confirmed. If that's the case, then it's less deadly than the flu. Main point is we were asked to flatten the curve and we did that. The healthcare system has plenty of beds and ventilators. We are far more prepared to handle this uptick than we were four months ago. There's no reason for any local government to mandatorily make their citizens wear masks.
Amen.
Especially when it's not mandated by the president or our governor.
Amen.
It's overreach and infringement of people's personal rights. If someone wants to wear a mask, that's their right. More power to them. But they don't have the right to mandate that I wear one.
Amen.
If someone is worried about catching COVID or they have underlying issues, it's probably best to stay home.
Amen.
We as a business have been open the entire time. So when you say businesses, I've been open. I'm slammed. I've been hiring people. So what you want to sit there and talk about and we can trace back to businesses and find out who's now being responsible is BS. Restaurants are the safest places people can be at.
Amen.
Right? We're mandated from top to bottom. I have health inspectors that will only eat at my restaurant and nowhere else because of the cleanliness. I have provided masks for every one of my employees. And if they so choose to wear one, that is their right. I'm not going to force them to do so.
Amen. Amen.
I'm not going to force any one of my patrons to come in there and have to wear a mask. That is their right. If they don't want to eat inside our facility, I have plenty of options for them. I have takeout. I have per side. I have drive-through. People can order food and have it shipped to their houses now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I'm the CEO, president of the nonprofit Brain Cancer of the Charter Coast. I've also been a public health nurse for 20 years.
Excuse me. I know who you are, but everybody else needs to know who you are.
So my name is Stephanie Angel. The problem is, nobody likes to be told what to do. And I get that. I really, I don't like to be told what to do. But the problem is, I know we've had cases, they've been tested positive, and unfortunately, they go out in the public. And that's the issue. So they're infecting other people. I do feel bad for the businesses because they don't know their personal situation. They don't know if that person is positive. And they go into that restaurant, either working as a, you know, consumer. And that's what's going to happen. That's why you can't stop the spread. And as far as like the local hospitals, as of last week, we haven't had any ICU beds available. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're closing public comment. So we were able to hear everybody. So again, I think all of us agree that it's important for you to be here. We appreciate that you're here. We're just trying to make sure everybody is heard, which is the point of this whole meeting, I think, in having the public comment conversation. I also want to say that I do, I think it's need to summarize a few things. You're all passionate about this and you're passionate for and against, but I know there were accusations made assuming that we all supported this mandated thing. At this time, I don't know that any of us have really stated how we feel and if we are going to be for or against it. So I hope that you are encouraged by what happened today, that you'll, if you can't be here Wednesday, you'll at least watch or go back and watch the meeting. It's going to be, I know, taking over a lot of prayer and a lot of debate, a lot of education on my part for me to be able to get to where I'm going to go at the end of the day. So at this time, I guess, Mr. Tipton, you'll be doing the emergency order for the building and we will come back. Mr. McIntyre, July?
July, it's Wednesday, July 1st at 2:00 PM in this chambers. And we will be sending out new notices as well.
And so it's important for everybody to be heard, which is why I think it was the majority of the board's decision to move this forward so that more could have the right. I do want to clarify two things though. According to the man, if it does happen, there is exemptions in place if you have a mental condition, you do not wear the mask. And if you are under the age of two years old, you do not have to wear the mask. So I think it's important, we have information that I know the community is not privy as to at all times. And so I think it's important for you to understand that those are two criterias put into this suggestion and those are exempt. So for the mental conditions and under the age of two, they are exempt from having to do this should the board decide to go that direction. So.
As well as social distancing, outside.
Right. And that was the other thing, that if you can social distance, then the mask is not being mandated to. So these are all conversations we're going to bring up, we're going to elaborate, and we're going to talk about on Wednesday. We can't get into it, unfortunately, right now because we're moving forward. I want to thank the board for everybody's input. Mr. McIntyre, your leadership and, do you have any closing?
One statistic was brought up that 80% of the people that are infected are asymptomatic. And that's really what the issue is. We don't know who is actually carrying and spreading. So it's the asymptomatic individuals is where this conversation is really where the problem is. We don't know who, and they could have somebody that's just carrying. It's just like going back to the HIV. You know, you don't see somebody and they automatically have HIV or AIDS or some other infection. In this case, you know, simply asymptomatic folks are carrying and they're spreading. And that's why we're trying to at least, you know, create some mechanism. And so that's really the challenge we have.
And I think that this could be a lot of conversation on Wednesday. I think there's going to be a lot of points brought out. I think there's going to be a lot of businesses weighing in on this. And for me, I wanted the opportunity to let you all have your voice heard. So I'm totally confident that we're going to get there. And I'm glad that you were here today. I know many of you that have businesses, you're taking time away from your restaurants. Again, I want to say thank you. And everybody, please enjoy your weekend. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. But Mr. McIntyre, do you have anything before we close out?
How do you put a mask on a two-year-old?
You don't. That's why it's exempt.
Oh, so three, I mean. Okay, that's a big difference. Does anyone have children? I'm not really sure.
I don't think for this.
Okay. The key has to mandate for under six years.
We're trying to do.
Yeah, we're trying to have a meeting.
Right. You should consider six years old, like the key.
Ma'am, I apologize, but you really have to contain. This is all recorded and for legal purposes. Everything stated has to be on the record for legal purposes.
I'm glad they know.
So, Mr. McIntyre, you indicated that we needed a motion. You started to craft language that would be appropriate for a motion earlier. So I would just suggest that the board go ahead and move to continue this hearing to Wednesday, July the 1st at 2:00 PM or sooner after in these chambers. But that they also direct staff to make sure that the notice of the meeting is, even though it's being continued, is also circulated in the website and how are we posting, how will we normally post meetings? So that we'll get maximum notice out to the public. Now, Sheriff, so move.
Second.
Second. Okay, my secretary, would you please call the role?
Commissioner Hachison?
She had to lead.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zabowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
And Sheriff Thompson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. So for those of you that can make it back on Wednesday, it's going to be at 2:00 in the afternoon. And Mr. Tipton, do you have anything you'd like to say before we leave? Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here.